Welcome to the Tupelo Regular City Council Meeting of July the 5th, 2023. At this time, we'll have an invocation by Nettie Davis and a pledge of allegiance by Buddy Palmer. Could everybody please rise?
Our visitor today is Reverend Gloria McKinnon. She would do the invocation at this time. She's been with us on several other cases. We're happy to have her tonight.
Thank you. I'll just stand right here with the microphone. I'm an honorary mayor, very dear. That's right. We just get close, you know? Unity. It's a blessing to be back with the council and to be invited. I consider it an honor and I very seldom, I don't think, have said no to any of the invitations that I've been granted to give, and I just want to lift up Jesus and the council. Will you bow with me, please? Most gracious Father, I thank you for another opportunity that you've given me. I ask your prayers upon the city council, upon the mayor and others that make up this body. I thank you, Lord, for their work, and I pray that you will continue to guide them in wisdom and encourage them to stand on your promises and to do those things that are done to help make the city of Tupelo what it is. I thank you, Lord, for the lessons that they have learned in their wards and the work that they are doing, and I pray, Lord, as they work together as a body, knowing that we are just members of the body, that we all will work together and we will share what we have with others. We pray that this meeting, Lord, that has been called to order, will be in order, and there will be decency, and there will be respect for others who will be coming forth to render whatever they have to say during this council meeting. Now, Lord, I ask you to give them strength, and give me strength as your servant, to do your will and to continue working in the kingdom of God that will benefit everyone with no respect to person, color, or creed. We are all made by you, united in Christ together, to go out in the workforce to make a difference in the lives of those citizens that we represent. In your name I pray. Amen.
Join with me in the pledge. Attention, salute pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we'll call the meeting to order. In the first piece of business is the election of the city council officers. And in the matter, do I have a motion for the election of the city council president?
So move.
So I had none. Who is it, Chad?
The, the, for both president and vice president? President be Travis Beard, Councilman Beard.
I have a motion to nominating Travis Beard as the council president. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, Travis.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is a matter of election of the city council vice president. Do I have a nomination?
Yes, Mr. President, I nominate Ms. Nettie Davis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor of Ms. Nettie Davis being vice president? My first act as, as the president for this year. Mayor, if you would allow me to come to the podium and ask Mr. Lynn Bryan to come forward. We've been very fortunate this year to be led by a strong council president, Mr. Lynn Bryan. I think he's had some situations that have come up during the course of the year and handled them with tact, and has been fair in his dealings with everyone, and our council together have, has progressed. We've had no major divisions in the council members, and we've worked together to solve the problems. So Lynn, congratulations and giving this plaque and honor. I just served. Let's just move it around next to you. At this time, I call on Councilwoman Nettie Davis to confirm or amend the agenda in the agenda order.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we would confirm and amend to the agenda and agenda order, and with one addition, and that would be item 22, in the matter of demolition located at 117 and 117 and a half hour drive, partial 077Q3608500, at June 20, 2023 meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Unanimous. This time, we will move to proclamations, recognitions, and reports agenda. Proclamations, do we have any?
No, sir.
Recognition, boy and girl scouts? I see nine. Employee recognition, we have a couple of those, Mayor?
We do. First, we have Shelby Ray. Come on up, Shelby. With sincere appreciation, the city of Tupelo recognizes Shelby Ray with the Cadis Bank Arena for five years of dedicated employment. All right. Next, we have Hal Laron Beal. Come on up. With sincere appreciation, the city of Tupelo recognizes Hal Laron Beal, Tupelo Police Department, for five years of dedicated service.
Next, we go to public recognitions, and I'll start with Chad on the end.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I'd like to second your idea about Lynn did a good job last year, I think he did, and I look forward to your leadership.
Thank you. I'd like to, on behalf of the council, send the condolences to Markel Whittington and his family on the loss of Libby, his wife. Nettie, Travis, myself, Buddy, we served three terms of Markel. We got to know Libby over a period of time, and she was a fine person and a good community member, and we're all going to miss her, so. Nettie?
I would like to thank the city for making opportunity available for us to attend the Mississippi Municipal League. It was a great convention, and we had a lot, learned a lot, and enjoyed being, being with each other during this time, and we, it was just always great to be able to go down to the coast. It's a beautiful part of Mississippi.
I thought Ms. Nettie was going to mention something about the Juneteenth Festival, but it was a hot day on Saturday, and I think there was pretty good turnout for that, so I want to thank the leadership as well on that. Also, with the mayor being out of town on the 4th, I was privileged to have them opening remarks for the Miss Volunteer Mississippi Pageant, which is in town this week. They have a pre-teen division as well as a Miss Volunteer Mississippi. If you might know that the winner in Tupelo last year was the winner for Miss USA Volunteer. So I challenged them to go for two in a row and try to bring it back here. But it's a good, good group in town yesterday, taking part in those activities, and last, last night, although they were threatened a little bit, the Park and Recreation did a good job with the fireworks, and it went off on time and on schedule, even though it was challenging during, during the day. So thank you guys for your, for your effort on that. Mayor's remarks?
Just a few things. Again, Lynn, congratulations on the previous year, and with a note, the police department got the Public Safety Award at the MML for conversations with the chief. So, Chief, we appreciate your involvement in the community, and that's what, that's what that was about. And that's it. Thanks.
At this time, we go to the public agenda, public hearings. Apologize, new experience for me. Normally, cut that thing off. In the matter of public hearing for lot mowing, is anyone here to speak to lot mowing? Number four, in the matter of public hearings for demolition, is anyone here to speak to the demolitions? We have one. If you will come forward to the mic. Yes, ma'am. She can, she can stand by if she wants to. If you would, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council.
My name is Taylor Hinton. I live at 1200 Crescent Avenue. Wonderful seats and familiar faces here. Travis has been my councilman for a long time. Speaking on the matter of the demolition of my house at 209 Finschere Lake Road, I have been working on getting that done. I was days away from closing, and my title search was halted. I've been in contract since January. I've been begging them to, to speak as long as possible. And I'm now, because I was not able to get that done myself, the demolition, I had planned to sell the lot for honestly pennies. It's a three acre lot, and, I mean, I sold it for less than my quarter acre lot in Lee Acres for that part. But I was just trying to find a solution to get it done, because I used to be the Lee Acres Neighborhood Association president. It wasn't very long before it got resolved for reasons out of my control, but I understand the issue of light. I promise I did. But all I'm here saying is that the issue of the list pending is being removed so that I can proceed to close, because you cannot get blood from a stone. And I'm in a unique position because I understand the issue of cost. It costs me, it costs you, whoever demoed it, it costs. But I have a real estate company that is trying to buy and absorb that cost, and guess what? If they don't, then y'all do have to tear it down. They have resources, they have money, so if they end up not, which they had planned to, by all means, I'm not saying that they won't, but what essentially will happen is I just lose this lot if y'all tear it down for me. But if I'm able to close on this sale, and they choose not to, they're like, you know what? We don't care about Tupelo, Mississippi, because the investment company is out of Texas. They say, we don't care about Mississippi. We're not going to do anything with that lot. It's not worth our time. We're just going to let it sit there. And you do have to tear it down for them? You're not trying to get blood out of stone. There are resources and actual money to go after them for court. I have to say that I do love living in Tupelo. I also have to say something really quickly to Mayor Todd Jordan. I will be honest, I, I've talked to you, I think, twice. I was going to eat groceries the other day and saw you cleaning up on Main Street, and I called my best friend because he was by himself. I was so proud. I said, you know what? I'm so proud of this and we're like Tupelo, because I genuinely love Tupelo, and I genuinely do understand the issue of light. I promise. Because we had the same issue in Lee Acres a couple of years ago, where there was a burned down house that sat for God knows how long, longer than my lot has sat, that we were questioning, okay, what, what is the status of this? And I had tried to explain that my closing deadline was June 27th, and list pending was filed June 16th, that prevented my closing. And I don't, I'll be honest, I don't know what happens if, if you end up putting a lien on my property, because honestly, you can have the lot, but does that affect the house that I live in? Because that lot is not worth whatever lien you're going to put on it. I don't, it's, I personally was not able to get a quote for less than $25,000 to have the house torn down. I couldn't sell it for that. I don't know if y'all could either. So if I owe you a balance after that, I don't know how I would pay it to you, honestly.
Ma'am, could I, could I intervene just?
Of course.
We're here to help you. We want to work with you, okay? We're not against you. We want to do everything we can to stay within the guidelines that we're, you know, that we've got to go by, but we also want to help the homeowner. Do you know Mr. Dennis Robinson sitting back here? Bonds, I mean, not Robinson. That's an upgrade from Bonds to Robinson.
I've spoken with him before about.
If you, if you'll get with him, you know, and he will work with you on, on seeing how we can get this solved. Now, we're probably going to go ahead and vote on it tonight, but that won't change anything with him working with you to solve your problem and help you out of your situation, okay?
I appreciate it.
You've got a lovely family there.
Thank you. I appreciate the time, and I love living in Tupelo, and I have to, I just have to take less than my time to say again that I was so proud to see my mayor buy and sell, improving our community.
Amen. We like to see the mayor out working occasionally.
There was not a, there was not a post on Facebook, there was not a live, there was nothing. That was just Mayor Todd Jordan out there solely improving our community, and I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
If you would just go back to the back and talk with Dennis back there, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any appeals? I see none. Citizens hearing? There are none. Close the public agenda and open the regular session. Action agenda? In the matter of amendments to the animal control ordinance tabled on May the 2nd, 2023?
Mr. President, as a point of information, we will have a meeting with the animal control staff and probably the chief and our son, a member of the police administration tomorrow with the animal shelter, and would ask the council to continue to leave this on the table until we hear all sides of the issue, or at least one more time, do that, and all of y'all are invited to attend at 2:00 PM in the conference room B.
Do we need a, a motion for that?
I'll just leave it on the table.
Okay. We will now move to the routine agenda in the matter of approval, approval of minutes of June 20, 2023 council meeting.
So move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? In the matter of bill pay?
I move that we pay bills.
Second. We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. The bills were paid tonight by Mr. Palmer, Ms. Davis, Mr. Beard, and Ms. Gaston. All in favor? In the matter of advertising and promotional items? Do we have a motion? There are none? All right. None there? In the matter of approval to submit for energy efficiency and conservation block grant programs?
I move that we would approve to submit our energy efficiency and conservation block grant program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Amy? Abby? I'm going to get the name right. I'm going to practice.
I'm just seeking approval to submit for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. The funding allocated under this grant will be used to cover the cost of new lights for the outside of City Hall, and this should be approximately $76,000, and there's no match for this grant.
Is there any question? All in favor? In the matter of approval of submission of Firehouse Service Grant for side-by-side, Abby?
Yes, this is seeking approval for the Firehouse Public Safety Foundation Grant. This will be used to replace a current side-by-side that no longer runs. It's not operational. There's no match for this grant, which is expected to be approximately about $25,000.
Any discussion?
Do we need to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I move that we approve this submission.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of appointment of Brad Robinson as interim fire chief?
So move.
We've got a motion and a second. Mayor?
Yes, Brad's here. He, Brad was promoted deputy chief last December, and it's fit in perfect and done a very good job, and it was under the recommendation to a former fire chief, Kelly Elliott, that we promote Brad to interim fire chief.
Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of appointment of Dennis Bonds as interim development surface director?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, Mayor? Any question?
I don't think so.
Dennis, anything to say?
Rubber stamp, we've already been, been out of the road, I believe.
All in favor? In the matter of review approved properties for lot mowing?
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? There was nobody here to question those. All in favor? In the matter of review approved demolitions?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Lynn Bryan, second by Nettie Davis. Any questions or concerns? All in favor? In the matter of review approved liens for lot mowing?
So move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of surplusing officers' weapon?
I move that we would surplus officer's weapon.
Second.
A motion and a second. Chief?
Last week, Sergeant Trey Weaver retired for the Tupelo Police Department. He's been there over 30 years. He has requested that he be allowed to purchase his sidearm for $1. If you will please surplus this weapon for him so we can do so.
Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of surplus weapon for retirement?
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. John?
Nicole Dolls retired two weeks ago, and she would also like to purchase her sidearm for $1, so I'm asking you please surplus this weapon.
All in favor? The matter of accept bid number 2023-027PR for a bucket truck?
Move to accept this bid.
Second.
Motion and a second. Mr. Farnin?
Yes, this is, back on June 27th, we did a reverse bid for a bucket truck, and just glad to report to the council that this bucket truck came in under budget, and just ask your permission to go forward and move forward to hear this approval.
Any discussion? All in favor? In the matter of surplus fixed asset items for scrap?
I move that we would surplus fixed asset items for scrap.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Alec?
So this is a piece, it's a rock, rock wall climbing thing that we use at the pool, at the aquatic center. We've had it since the pool opened, and it's just taken a total long time, and so we ask y'all tonight just to surplus it for scrap.
All in favor? In the matter of request to reject bid number 2023-025WL LED luminaries, six month supply?
Move to, I'm sorry.
Is there a motion?
Move to reject this bid.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Okay. Mr. Timman?
Yeah, tonight, I'm requesting this be rejected. The reason being, the number one is the lowest bidder, of course, did not meet specifications, and the second was, the second most bidder, that he was out of budget, so we'd like to rebid it. Does the county have some better numbers?
All in favor? In the matter of request to reject bid number 2023-026WL Water Materials?
I move that we would reject bid number 2023-026 Water and Light Water Materials.
Second.
A motion and a second, Mr. Timman?
Yes, this is a six, six month supply of water materials. I request you reject it, this bid, and because of the bids, of course, and the city can't come up with some of this next go around.
All in favor? Number 22, in the matter of demolitions located at 117 and 117 and a half Highland Drive, This was tabled at the June 20th meeting. And we're going to leave, I mean, leave it on the table, so do we need a motion? Leave it on the table. Okay. That completes the regular agenda. There is nothing on our steady agenda. Agenda, Ben, do we need to consider an executive session?
Yes, very brief. The two items that we have on there is prospective litigation and purchase of real property.
Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Who do you need to say?
Mayor, first two rows, or Scott on up, Kim. Why don't we get Dennis in here, too? That'd be fine.
Thank you for coming tonight, if you are not involved in the executive session. If you are not involved in the executive session.